Okay, everybody. Welcome to our special council meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 22, 2025. Great audience here in chambers and hoping there are several people online as well. Note that we will have citizen comments before the meet, before the general business starts. There will not be a second one after one. So we have two topics on tonight's agenda which has been presented and there should be copies by the door for you. So we'll go ahead and start with the invitation and I will go ahead and do that followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please join me.
Your father, thanks for bringing us together today to discuss our city business. Please put on our hearts the best interests of the people and the best interests of the community tonight. Let us open our hearts and our ears to listen to them, listen to each other and be open to new ideas, new suggestions. We all have different perspectives and let us please respect that in each other. Amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start on my left, Councilmember Van Orman. Here, Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Council, Mayor Pro Tim Cargill.
Present.
Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn will be joining us just a few minutes late and then I think I'm pretty sure this is Councilmember Kennedy's number on here. Again, we can't, I don't know for sure if he can hear us, but we cannot hear him. So. He what? Okay, can you, can you promote him to panelist, please? So I can see him? Okay, you, you said he's here?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right. So Sean, since, since we're not sure if Mike can hear us and we can hear him, do we count him as present? I mean, his number's here, but I don't know.
Well, if he's not present, we can just excuse him for now and to the extent that he can participate, we can acknowledge it at that point.
Okay. All right. So but for, I see Councilmember Dunn, for voting purposes, what do we do?
Well, he has to be able to participate. If he's not able to participate, then no.
Okay, so, so for now, can we, until we can confirm that Councilmember Kennedy can hear and participate? Can, do we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Kennedy?
Just real quick, Evan, can you boot him from the meeting and then maybe that'll force him to call back in and fix the problem? Just wondering.
We can excuse now and then we can.
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Kennedy for now.
Second.
Thanks, Councilmember Dunn. We have motioned a second. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six zero. All right, we have agenda approval before us.
Mayor will make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Van Orman. Any of any, ah, any questions before we proceed? Not hearing any of those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes five, one with Councilmember Kurtz. With nay. All right, we are up to citizen comments. So first, before we start calling on people, just another reminder of the rules of engagement. There is a three-minute time limit. You cannot gift your time to somebody else, I'm sorry to say. But we just asked, it can be on, even though, well, Sean, since this is a special meeting, it's going to be on just tonight or since it's open citizen comments, it can be on anything.
It can.
Okay. All right. So even though it's a special meeting, there can be comments on any topic tonight. Again, three-minute limit, we ask that you keep your comments respectful. It's strictly a comment period, no back and forth with the council. I know most of you heard this before, but if we need to get back in touch with you, we will make sure we have your contact information and staff will follow up. We will do in-person comments first. If you would like to make a public comment, there's yellow sheets by the door. If you can just get one to Rochelle here at the end of the table. And for those online, please send a note to our meeting host as soon as you can, so we can acknowledge you and call on you. And then our city clerk Rochelle will also read into the record some written comments that we got. So first up, first one I got was for Lynn Atkins.
Good evening. Lynn Atkins, resident of Liberty Lake. I'm speaking in favor of the working draft of the GHG sub-element of the comprehensive plan. This weekend, there was misinformation that was posted on the Liberty Lake community page. It started with a post that was headed, "How is Liberty Lake going to cut back and monitor residents' meat consumption?" I'm concerned that people may have read this post and written in against the plan based on incorrect information, as there is nothing in the recommendation for city action that has anything to do with meat consumption. Now, Mayor Pro Tim did express concern about supporting a plan that addresses a goal that he feels we have no chance of achieving by 2050. The projections were made based on where we sit today. Expanded use of existing technologies over the next 25 years, plus the development of new and improved ones will help move us towards the goal. A goal, not a mandate. Having a plan is the mandate. This plan does not force any citizen into driving electric cars, giving up their existing appliances, or to stop eating meat. What it does do is lay a foundation from which to begin, and we must begin, because the cost is too high for us not to. I ask that you vote in favor of the GHG sub-element as a working plan. On the second topic, there's an advisory vote on the library. The council was advised last week that there was insufficient time to meet the deadline for a November 2025 election. An advisory vote has the same requirements and deadline as any other ballot measure. Our library and the community space is too important to be rushed to meet a deadline that is only eight working days away. There's too much unknown information. What is the funding mechanism? No floor plan has been selected yet. And frankly, there is a large amount of the population who do not understand what an advisory vote is. Additionally, there are costs associated with this, and I don't believe it's a good use of taxpayer dollars at this time. And let me be clear, I am not saying collecting votes is not worthy. I'm saying providing a rushed and incomplete product does not merit the expense. A 2026 vote allows sufficient time to gather all the appropriate information and work on funding so that you can provide something that will allow citizens to make an informed decision. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing the conversation this evening.
Thank you. All right, before we go to the next Sean, so we've confirmed that Councilmember Kennedy can hear us, but he's having trouble unmuting. And I don't do Teams from my phone that often, so I don't know, I mean Zoom from my phone, so try to direct him to the unmute button. I don't know. Somebody with Mark, if you would want to call him or?
I can give it a shot.
Okay. All right. So. So while Mark steps out for just a minute, so we'll, we'll work on that and we'll, we'll hold off on noting that Councilmember Kennedy is present, so we hopefully fix that. Okay, all right. So Mike, if you can hear me, Mark's going to be calling you. All right, up next, Kim Schmidt.
Hello, my name is Kim Schmidt. I live in the city limits. I don't have anything super fancy to say. We all know I don't like the flowery language and such anyways. I'm here tonight because I'm frustrated with this library process in general. One of the tenets that I operate by in my life is, don't listen to what they say, watch what they do. The attempt to get this on the ballot feels like another way to just kick the can down the curb a little bit further. There's been numerous stops to the library project along the way, and this feels like another. I don't want to see a rushed effort. There's so many unknowns at this point that the it doesn't feel genuine. This does not feel genuine. Our own city manager asks that we don't rush this vote. This vote has failed before when it made on the ballot. And we want to provide our citizens with the best library possible. And at this point, there's been so many twists and turns along the way that we don't even have a floor plan at this point. Listen to your city staff, please. You know, city manager stayed last meeting. He doesn't feel this is advisable. There's eight days from the time of this vote this evening, eight business days from the time of the vote this evening until when the information would have to be turned in. That is a huge strain on, on city staff. There's a lot of other things that they could be focusing on right now. And just a quick little tidbit about the, all the misinformation that we've been seeing online about the greenhouse gas emissions plan and all that, even if we can make a small impact to reduce our impact, that is still an impact. Whatever we can do at this point is helpful, even if we can't reach the goal, it's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Shelley Smith.
Hi, Shelley Smith, 23-year resident of Liberty Lake. I'm here to comment on two agenda items on the greenhouse gas sub-element of the comprehensive plan. I want to express support for the work done by city staff and the planning commission and to encourage city council to approve that section of the plan. I don't understand those in the community who so are so alarmed about basic concepts based on science that are presented in the plan. I will, though, not eat meat because I don't, so you know, nobody has to worry about that. All of the proposed goals are appropriate and they're appreciated by some of us citizens. And at this, and this component of the plan is a requirement, that's the mandate, so let's just move forward on that. On the advisory vote for the library and community center, it is unclear how this came about after the July 15 meeting, but advisory votes are non-binding and public opinion can be ascertained in a variety of ways as outlined by Jandy at the last meeting. This vote is rushed. It would be a waste of time and money. Let's do it right. Let's spend the time needed to prepare for the 2026 ballot measure, the November 2026 ballot measure. An offceseal vote will be low-volume, confusing to citizens, and there's very limited time to prepare for it properly. This sudden change in direction really reeks of a hidden agenda. So I ask you to please move forward with the plan that you decided on at the last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, next up, Abby Schuster. Another graduate of City Academy.
Yes. It was, it was a delight. I recommend it to anyone. So my name is Abby Schuster. I am a 20-year resident of Liberty Lake. I live within the city limits. I am here to speak on primarily the draft greenhouse sub-element of the comprehensive plan. There have been, there has been quite a bit of misinformation presented to the community through the community Facebook page, which I understand is not an official channel of the city. And I am here specifically in support of the Ridgeline High School students who participated in and worked on that project. I feel that many of them feel as if the adults in their community are not taking that effort seriously. And they came to us as the youth of this community who have to live with the consequences of that climate change. And so to dismiss them outright is really disrespectful. So I come sort of to speak not for them, but on their behalf. Secondly, the advisory vote, vote for the library community center. This one snuck up on me because it sounds like it changed very swiftly in the last week or so. But I would say we need to act generally and always in the best interest of the city and hopefully in our library. If it is to be rushed, just in the interest of saying that we talked to the voters and they didn't like it, and we're going to brush it under the rug, that is not a valid reason to move forward quickly. If, if the best interest is to get more information and come forward with a good plan and take the time to do so, then I would support that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, before we go to online, is there anybody else in chambers? Okay, do we have anybody online who'd like to make a public comment? Okay. If you please introduce, I don't know if it's Betty Kennedy or not, or Betty, can you introduce yourself? And let us know if you're a Liberty Lake resident, and then go ahead, you'll have three minutes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi Betty.
Yeah, this is Betty. I was just doing it to see if Mike can join this way or not.
Oh, oh, okay. That would be great. Yeah.
We've been, we've been trying three, three different ways, so.
All right, well, we've got you now.
All right, turning it over to Mike.
Okay. All right, good. So can we please now acknowledge that Councilmember Kennedy has joined the meeting? All right, thanks for everybody for your help for that. Do we have any citizen comments online? Okay. All right, we, I know we do have some written comments to acknowledge.
Thank you, Mayor. We received written public comment from Jack Marata, Robin Beckletal, Dandy Bishop, Colleen Ravish, Lou Helgeson, Patricia Bartkins, and Petra Hoy regarding an advisory vote. We received additional public comment by Lisa Mueller regarding a larger library. Thank you.
And do we have any on the greenhouse gas topic? No? Okay. All right. So we will move forward from citizen comments to general business action items. So the action item is approval of the work, excuse me, approval of the GHG sub-element of the comp plan as a working draft. Let me make a motion that we can have our discussion. Well, for, we'll motion it and then we'll do the, we'll do the presentation and discussion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the greenhouse gas study as it is written.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Dunn. All right, Lisa, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm going to try and keep it very brief and high level. You've already heard the very detailed scientific analysis that was done, so I'm not going to take you down into the weeds. Evan, if you can pull up my presentation, please. Thank you. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to say that what we're asking tonight is for you to basically approve the draft greenhouse gas sub-element for planning purposes to allow us to submit it to Commerce for early review and hopefully pre-approval. And I want, but I want to give you some context to why that's important. So first of all, climate planning is a mandated element of this comprehensive plan update that is due in 2026. I've got the RCW up on there. There's two elements to it that we must plan for. One is the resiliency sub-element. And what that is about is like planning for things like flood, drought, wildfire, the things that we're hearing in the news every day this summer that are happening around our country and around the world. The other thing that we need to do is we need to look at greenhouse gas emissions reductions as a sub-element. And the state has provided the city with the grant to develop this climate element, so those, there's a lot of comments out there, I can't believe the city spent money on this, et cetera. This is fully funded by a state grant. It is a mandate whether we take the grant or not, but this way at least the residents of the city are not planning, paying for the planning effort. And this is a really important point. This, this grant that we have been given for this climate planning, grant reimbursements are on a deliverable basis. And oh, by the way, this is a deliverable. We don't submit the deliverable. We don't get paid for what we've already expended. We don't get reimbursed. Next slide, please. So just to give you a high-level overview of the GHG reduction element, and we talked about this a lot in our workshop, but on a high level, I just want to reinforce the fact that we, the consultant used a prescribed methodology to establish a baseline for greenhouse gas emissions within the city. It's not an exact science, but it's simply a baseline. And the same methodology will be followed in five years to measure it. And yes, we are mandated in five years to measure our progress towards this goal, so. But we'll use the same methodology, so it's, it's whatever the difference is between the two. Next slide, please. So generally speaking, regarding the greenhouse gas recommended goals and policies. So the Climate Planning Action Team and, and the Planning Commission evaluated goals and policies that were a broad range of them that were identified by the state in their guidance. The recommended goals and policies, first of all, I want to be clear about this. They do not prohibit anything and they do not mandate anything. You'll see the verbs that we use in there are things like partner, encourage, educate, incentivize. They do promote goals and policies that are already based on our community values and as as we discussed at the last meeting, many of these are already contained in goals and policies within our comprehensive things about multimodal transportation, bike and pedestrian routes, mixed use, street trees and green space. It also talks about things that promotes ideas that will save our residents money and improve safety and generally improve the quality of life in Liberty Lake, which is what this community is about. Next slide, please. So, and again, we heard from Ms. Atkins about this. The state's GHG reduction target is net zero greenhouse gases by 2050. Now, this chart here, the red line is, at the top shows the trend continuing. The first dotted red line in the middle is how much reduction we're going to get through state actions that are already being taken. The little bit of reduction below that is the reduction based upon local activities. And so, so we're, we're not, we're demonstrating that we're not going to be able to meet this goal in 2050 with the tools that are available and the levers that are available to us as a city today. Over time, technologies will change and perhaps there'll be additional levers that we can bring to bear. But at this point in time, we're taking a position that we can't meet that target in 2050. And that, by the way, is one of the reasons why it's super important for us to submit this sub-element for planning purposes to Commerce for early review and hopefully pre-approval. Because we're not showing that we're meeting the target and we were realistic in our goal setting based upon what levers were available to the community. Next slide, please. So bottom line, I want to reinforce this. Again, all we're asking is for you to approve this for planning purposes, so we can submit it to Commerce to get their feedback. I want, I do want to say that, that the goals and policies in this climate planning element have tentacles throughout our comprehensive plan. As I said, many of the policies are already in different elements of the comprehensive plan. And for us to make sure that we integrate it, we need to get these comments early so that we can, so the final document can get back to Commerce. We have a very heavy lift in 2026 as it relates to updating our development codes to meet state mandates. And so we're really trying very hard to meet the timelines to be able to do that by December of 2026, the, the development code. And this, that requires an early completion of the comprehensive plan process. So what are the consequences of not moving forward at this point? There, there's a couple of things you should be aware of. First of all, we won't be reimbursed for funds that we've already expended to pay the study. If we don't get Commerce approval on this, the city may be liable to repay grant reimbursements that we've already received up to two, which up till today, we've received $245,000 in grant money. Also, if our comprehensive plan does not meet the requirements of the Growth Management Act, the city will not be eligible for any other state grant funding. That's a pretty significant hit. We must be compliant in order to get grants. Also, the state can preemptively mandate policies and code amendments to bring us into compliance with GMA. And I have to tell you that a couple of years ago, the valley took that route as it, as it related to their shoreline master plan. It didn't work well for them. It's not in anybody's interest to let them prescribe code to the city. So that's, that's the context I wanted to share with you, and I know that there's a lot of discussion that needs to be had by council, but I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of those sideboards.
Right. Maybe have any questions for Lisa? Councilmember Kurtz.
The planning commission voted on this, yeah?
Yes.
What was their vote?
Their vote was unanimous to move it forward to city council.
And then the climate planning advisory team, did they also vote?
Yes, they did. And again, they, they moved it forward to the planning commission. Again, there's a process involved. So, yeah, so, yes.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Van Orman.
Lisa. During the planning commission, did they talk about adding any type of metrics? They were talking about the fact of when one appliance, you know, pits out, your natural gas no longer works, then you've got to go ahead and change out to an electrical. Have you had any mandates to where the, the next one would come into play? Right now, we don't have enough energy to fulfill that. I'm just thinking about when we had ice storm. And at that particular point, that was the only thing that kept your house warm was natural gas.
So, so again, there's nothing mandated in here. Actually, building code probably requires more. It doesn't actually mandate that you get rid of natural gas. What it does is it actually, you have to meet certain energy code and there's different things you can do to meet those energy requirements. You can include a heat pump that's supplemented by other sources. You can.
But not eliminate.
I'm sorry?
But not eliminate. Wendy, can you?
There's no requirement to eliminate gas appliances in building code right now. There's also no, we're not suggesting that that happened, but it does start to educate what alternative sources are. And as we, as technology expands, there will be more alternative energy sources. So I, I have confidence that that is in the pipeline, so to speak.
I think that's where I was kind of talking about metrics, is making sure that we are meeting that before we eliminate something else.
So our metrics, the, the metrics for this piece is that we have to come up with basically what are, an estimate of our greenhouse gas emissions today following this prescribed methodology. And in five years, we're going to have to look at our progress and reevaluate our goals and policies based upon the progress that we're making in reducing the greenhouse gas emissions. So that's, that's, that is the metric that has been put before us by this Commerce requirement.
Okay.
I will say, on the other, on the other hand, though, that we have been talking to the utilities as it relates to the utilities piece of it and that they do have a plan in place for the growth that we're projecting, et cetera. So that's, so, so we are having those conversations also as part of the comprehensive plan. So understand your concern, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim.
Lisa, excuse me, just a couple of questions here and then just a few comments. Obviously, our comprehensive plan is due to the state for next year.
Yes, so.
Starts next year.
So this is, this is, this is the timeline. They just, the, the legislature extended it to December of 2026. However, they didn't extend the six month after that to get the development code amendments done. We have very substantial development code amendments that we must make. That is probably the heaviest lift involved. And so we are trying to, we are on target right now to get our, our comprehensive plan to you for approval in, by June, the end of June 2026. And because there's such a long lead time for the adoption process, all the agencies that we have to coordinate with and whatnot, it gives us the better part of next year to work on just purely development code and just hitting those targets for the adoption through June.
But the, the entire comprehensive plan is due to the state? Or due to be approved June of next year?
Well, it's actually due December of next year, but as I said, it kind of, it's hard to do the development code if you don't know what your comp plan says.
So your, your buffer is June?
Yes.
Okay. So here's my thought, kind of along the same lines as Wendy. Obviously, this is a state mandate and there's not a lot that we can do on state mandates. We have to follow them. That having been said, I don't think the state mandate was to put something together that didn't have, at least in my opinion, didn't have the metrics that Wendy was referring to. And so when I read through this whole thing, the 50 pages or however long it was, the thing that stuck out to me the most is that, A, I have no idea year by year, what our goal, what our metric is going to be to determine if we're meeting our goal. And the cardinal rule of goals, in my opinion, is that these things that were. these things that we're adopting, we should measure to see if we're adopting them. Um, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, we would do it every five years or so. But five years is a long time. And if we are going to come in and say, okay, we're going to recommend doing all these different things in here or we're gonna, we're gonna educate or all these different policies, what is that going to get us, I guess, is my, is my question? And, and it's not a, you know, it's not a question I expect you to answer, Lisa, but I guess my concern is that there's a lot of stuff in here, a lot of flowery language about what we should do. And even if we do all those things, which we mentioned in the last meeting and you just mentioned earlier, we're not even going to come close to meeting the goal. Not even, we're not going to be 50% of the way there. So, if this is such a critical component, I really believe that we need to add some metrics in here. And I would also, um, I would also just add, I think it's important that we put in here what this is going to cost us. So, if the goal, if on page 68, for example, we say policy nine dot two dot one, if we're going to require that um electric vehicles be installed at all city facilities, for example, what is the cost to the city to do that? And I know last time, Avista donated the one at Trail Ed, so we didn't have to worry about that, but there are going to be other costs associated, obviously. Uh, policy nine dot four dot four phases out the use of gas-powered landscaping equipment in city operations. What's the cost going to be to do that? And so, I, I guess I feel like we're being asked to approve a, a plan that's kind of a fairy tale without necessarily having the metrics to say, okay, here's what we think, even if, if it's just an estimate, here's what we think it's going to cost us. And by 2027, we think it's going to result in this. By 2028, this and so on.
So, I, I, I understand what you're saying. Uh, again, the comprehensive plan provides rules and policies um that then form programs um or used to, as a basis to form programs. One of the things that you don't see yet and you will see as part of the comprehensive plan for each of our elements, we are going to be including an implementation strategy. And so, many of the things that we're looking at require a um, an implementation plan. So, we would need to do a feasibility study on and look at funding sources. There are grants for going like solar and public facilities, et cetera. Kind of have to know which public facilities we're talking about. And that in and of itself is a moving target right now. So, what we would likely have is, in, in implementation strategies would be a feasibility study to look at X, Y, and Z um to be able to implement them. So, we're not proposing that these goals and policies are what we aspire to do as a city. And then we'll have to put the, the programs together. And, and you, as City Council, will have to approve both the programs and the funding for those programs, each and every one, as we put them together. Right now, this is just a skeleton and
So, then that kind of gets back to uh the point that I think Councilmember Ann Orman and others have been making in the community, whether it be valid or not. Yes, this is a skeleton, but the skeleton leads to policy changes.
That need to come to the council for
That need to come to, yes. And, and so, and, and that's, that at the end of the day, that's correct. But I will say that, again, we were very, and when I say we, I'm talking about the Clam, Climate Advisory Team and the Planning Commission. We were very strategic in going through the menu of goals and policies to identify those that are consistent with things that we are already trying to achieve and to really expand upon those ideas within our community. Do we have metrics for those yet? No, we do not. I will say this, that the metrics, and I'm going to go back to this. The metrics in this is that um the greenhouse gas inventory, that was probably the most expensive part of the whole study. And to do that, a, and it was very staff-intensive as well as consultant-intensive. To do that year over year um is a very heavy lift for a little city like ourselves. I will say that.
Do we have uh incremental targets?
Um
In this?
No.
Okay, the reason why I ask that is because I went uh to Department of Commerce and I looked at their climate, uh, planning guidance from December of 2023. And I realize it may have been updated. Um, but on page 60 of that, it says that local jurisdictions should use the 2022, uh, should use 2022 as their emissions baseline and set incremental targets that lead to achieving net zero in 2050 um consistent with Washington statewide target. So, when I read that and then I compare that to our report, it seems like our report doesn't have those incremental targets in them just yet.
So, um, Evan, can you go back to the second to the last slide that I had? That actually, if you look closely at that, that actually identifies the targets based upon what we think we can achieve um year by year. And it's, that's what the graph is about. It's what we think we're going to be achieving each year. So, it, it actually is in there. But again, back to my point, we don't control enough of the levers. If we were a larger city, if we controlled, if we were a larger community that controlled not just the waste management, but the waste disposal mechanism. And um if we con, controlled uh our water, our, our sewage treatment plants, et cetera, there may, there may be a few more big levers. Those are solid waste and sewage treatment are kind of big generators. They, one of the most uh, uh, carbon, we do everything in terms of a carbon equivalent. Some of the worst gases are produced by landfills and sewage treatment plants, methane. We do talk about partnering with our um partners, but we don't control those uh levers. And so, they're much more difficult. I will say also that they're, that basically the technology is not there. We have had a conversation with Commerce about whether or not, and, and again, it's one of the reasons, I'm going to say this again, why we want to submit this for early review is because if Commerce is not going to accept this, we think that this is a realistic target, given what we know today, that will be updated. We'll, we'll look at where we are in five years. It'll be updated in 10 years when technologies have changed and whatnot. But where we feel we can actually, this is what we feel like we can achieve. This is a realistic goal. And um I don't think that Commerce is asking us to project a fairy tale. And so, goals are goals, just like the, and, and um uh Wash Dot has a net zero goal. That's net zero, or has a, has a zero fatalities goal. They're never going to achieve that, not ever. That doesn't mean that it's not worthwhile goal to pursue. Of course, none of us want any fatalities on our roadways. But at the end of the day, um, all we can do is make safety improvements to try and reduce it. And I think that's the same concept here. But again, we're one of the first, none of, even the early ones have not been approved yet. So, we don't have anything to go on. We have no community examples for this. It's one of the reasons why, again, that we feel very strongly from a project management perspective, we got to submit this to Commerce and make sure that, tell us, tell us what to do differently if you're not going to accept this. Um, and that's, that's what we're asking you to allow us to do at this point. You will have ultimate approval over the comprehensive plan and final elements. We're trying to get feedback right now and, but I don't feel comfortable submitting something for feedback until this council has told me that it's ready for review.
Okay, I would, um, I'll just, I'll say one more thing and, and then I can be quiet here. Um, this is an important document because it sets us up for the next 25 years. And so, it is so important, in my opinion, that I don't feel comfortable voting for it unless I know here are the metrics that we're going to try to achieve. And here's what it's going to cost us. So, that's just a general comment from me.
And can I say one more thing? So, originally, the $500,000 that um, that Commerce had allocated for our community included, could be used for the planning and also for implementation. We had originally set aside 100 million of that to do those studies so we could figure out how we could actually implement those. Um, in this biennium, because the budget is so very tight, they, uh, we were advised that um we couldn't apply for implementation dollars. And in fact, we may never get implementation dollars. And so, we um submitted our grant application for the second biennium to include some things that would move the needle as it relates to resilient, resiliency planning and as it relates to um energy efficiency. And so, those, so those were some of the things that we included in this because we could apply for more planning dollars, so.
Yeah, I mean, if we're not, if we can't get implementation dollars either, then that makes my concerns even more concerning.
I, I, I totally appreciate it, but at the same time, it doesn't change the mandate that we're
No, I, I, I'm, I don't dismiss that. I'm just trying to figure out, how can we make it better?
Fair. All right, I had Councilmember Dunne up next.
Um, I would offer the observation of my experience from the Planning Commission to recognize the utility of the comp plan in comparison to the development codes and the subsequent ordinances that the city produces. The comp plan is a statement of goals specifically. And the comp plan by design is not included, uh, does not include, I'd say, specificity that really needs to be called out in the subsequent development codes and ordinances. So, with respect to any suggestion of a lack of, um, I use the word metrics, I think it was heard, uh, this not, that's not the place for that, in, in my opinion. Um, uh, I do recognize, actually, within the um, what's been prepared, the um, the methodology originally uh used by the city as an estimate. I think, Lisa, right? We uh through consulting work, uh, identified an estimate and that's a measurement. And then I think, I think I also heard you say that at a, at a time period, we are going to revisit that estimate and perform it again. Does that sound right?
That's correct, five years.
Yeah, that is an increment, in my opinion. And so, I'm satisfied that there is an increment uh in place and there is a measure in place sufficient for what I think is needed in a comp plan. Um, anything more specific than that needs to be lived out in the city's development codes. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, um, Jev, see your hand up, we'll go to you next.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, okay, a couple of questions here. Um, thank you for the additional information, Lisa. Um, on, uh, let's see here, on page 15 of the agenda packet, talking about the overall results uh as far as the inventory, you said this was a, this was the heaviest part of the lift, right? And the most expensive?
Absolutely.
So, um, now, now it lists what Liberty Lake was responsible for and then what was imported. Um, but then if we go down to page 19, when it talks about the imported uh emissions, it says these examples are included for educational purposes only. The goals and policies included in the climate element address local emissions only. So, eh, how much did we spend to find out what the imported emissions were? Do you have an idea on that?
That was actually fairly easy and I, I could defer to Beth, who is in the wings on this. But we used some uh, some standardized um approximations for that. There are some, some university studies that actually provide you with those. Um, Beth, are you on the line? Can you actually speak to the specifics of that?
Yes, I am, hi.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, so, yeah, so that was a, a pretty quick part of the work. Really, the, the bulk of the work is, is drawing all the local data, like how many kilowatt hours you use and like how, and local VMT and things like that. So, to do the um consumption-based part of the study, we combine information on um income in Liberty Lake that we get from the American Community Survey, Survey with estimates uh from the Cool Climate Calculator, which uh gives a breakdown of how much families at different income levels spend per household or the emissions per household at different income levels on different um sources of emissions. Does that answer your question? So, that part of it is not, was not a huge lift?
Yeah, I, I'm glad to hear that's, that's not a significant portion. Um, I, I think, um, I, I from what I'm looking at here, it doesn't seem to me, and I guess part of this will go uh back to another question I had for Lisa. I, what I'm trying to understand is which portion of this document is being submitted? Is it just everything down on uh, uh, starting on page 37, I believe? Is that, is that what's being submitted or is, is all of this being submitted?
So, we are submitting the um sub-element, which includes both the um setting GHG goals and targets for the climate element and the actual goals themselves. There's a checklist also that um we have to prepare based upon what, and any recommendations that come out of you to submit it to Commerce. But the bottom line is that we need to include our methodology and that's, this document is our, basically our methodology for
Oh, the whole 44 pages?
Yes.
Okay. Does that help, Councilmember Spencer?
Yeah, I, I, I guess, uh, yes, that, that is helpful. Um, I guess from uh my standpoint, uh, just looking at this, if it's not being required by the state, I don't see that it's going to be useful to have that in this packet as far as imported emissions. I, I don't think, um, if that's not being required, I, um, I don't, I don't think that needs to be part of our methodology, methodology, and I don't think we need to be uh checking in on a five-year basis either.
Go ahead. Any? Okay, I didn't know if you had a response, Lisa, okay. All right, um, who haven't we heard from? Councilmember Ball and then Councilmember Kennedy? After Councilmember Ball, if you've got uh any comments, we'll go to you.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, well, as far as um metrics, I mean, once again, this five-year check-in is right here on page 13 on the study. So, I don't understand why there's a problem with that because we will have to be checking in. The one thing I want to say about this document, and I read it several times, nowhere in here does it say must, that anybody must do anything. Um, it states in here that, um, for example, I saw a rather bizarre comment about uh some old lady's furnace going out and um she's being forced to pay for a new furnace even though she can't afford it. Nowhere in here does it say must. It says, community members, this is um along the same line, can, not must, choose to buy less, buy used um and/or repair broken items uh for food, and this is the meat production thing. Um, they're just suggesting that you consume fewer beef products. Nowhere in here does it say that someone is going to take your hamburger away. I like a good hamburger on occasion. This is not going to happen. There has been some major hysteria on social media and I find it appalling that this was allowed to be even on social media. Um, the, the first trigger for me that things were changing with the climate was Katrina. I mean, surely, we all remember that and it's getting worse and more frequent all the time. 27 kids were swept away from a, a camp. We've got to pay attention to these things or there will be no future. And I think the study was done so meticulously. The first time I read it, I was like, wow, these guys really put a lot into it. Um, everybody and the, the students, the Planning Commission, um, I, I, I don't understand what the panic is and the hysteria. Um, reaching uh, uh, net zero by 2050, yes, it's a lofty goal, a goal, lofty goal. But why can't we be part of the solution the best we can rather than focus on um a problem that may not even be there? Everybody can only do what they can towards solving the climate crisis, but it has to be solved. And I think this document is a good start for us. Also, um, back to the people that were a part of putting this together, um, I think by questioning this document and um getting hysterical over it is being very disrespectful to the team, our team and to Parametrics, that was the consultant, um, and to the students. So, um, just, you know, a few more things. I mean, if your furnace goes out, get a heat pump. I mean, you don't have to get it now. All we can do is what we can do to our own affordability. But we can start somewhere.
Thanks. All right, uh, Councilmember Kennedy, um, do you have any comments to add? You'll have, need to unmute yourself or we will, or however that's working right now.
Can you can you hear me?
You can. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm pleased that the technology of many, many tribes have been able to get into the meeting. This is the most interesting subject, because of greenhouse gas, I do feel that that is a concern. That is a great concern as we move forward. And have a plan, I think, is always important, but I think it has to be a workable plan. My concern is that this warm and fuzzy and terrible term of time to use is that there's such a rush to deal with this subject of greenhouse gas is we will come up with any possible way of correcting it. And in reality, what we're showing that it cannot be achieved. Now, if we were to achieve part of it, I still think that is an advantage. No question about that. My concern is when I feel that I'm being led to, if we don't do this, we're going to get sued. But also by twenty fifty, if we haven't done this, we can be sued. So I'm concerned about that. I think it's an important subject. But I do feel that it's being rushed because, you know, the word the matrix has been used. I think you can use many adjectives for that. I just think that we need to have adequate planning. I don't think the state has put us in a position to be able to do that. I think we have talented individuals, at least in the team, to be able to come up with some things that can work. It just feels like I'm having to be rushed on this, that if I don't hurry and do this, we might have to give money back, or we might be sued, or whatever the case may be. I'm more interested in, I think it's a good thing to look at, to think to move forward on, but I think we have to have some things in place that are realistically to achieve. Because if not, in five years down the road, the state or whatever can come back and say, well, what have you achieved? And then the question then is, why haven't you achieved this? So once again, it's important, but I I gotta admit, this is a tough one. Thank you.
Lisa, could you do, before we move on to our next comment, could you address the the benefit of us having submitting this draft, not final document, and the protections it will afford us with regards to Councilmember Kennedy's comments about being sued? You had mentioned that last meeting.
Yes, absolutely. And so so if if the Commerce Department with the State of Washington, who's charged with implementing the R C W and the Growth Management Act, if they pre-approve this, they will also defend us against lawsuit. And so that's one of the one of the reasons why we really push to have this done. And I do want to say that we've been working on this for eighteen months. So I know it may feel rushed to you, City Council. It doesn't feel rushed to us. It doesn't feel rushed to the Climate Planning Action Team and or the Planning Commission, and I apologize if we haven't brought more workshops to you. Again, the lift is pretty heavy with all of the changes that we have to make in our comprehensive plan, so my apologies on that.
Okay, so we've been through everybody once. I've got Councilmember Spencer up again.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa, another question I had for you on page twenty-nine of today's packet. And you had this up on screen a little bit ago, the reductions from local action.
Yeah, can you do me a favor?
Sure.
Can you cite the page number that's in the document?
Seventeen.
Thank you. That's the that's what I have.
Okay, so reductions from local action. What local action is it referring to? Because it it appears to me that obviously, the only thing within the city's control, based on what you said earlier, is that we we have no we have no mechanisms to compel citizens to do any of these things. Is this reductions from local action little 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 part of the the pie? Is that as a result of what actions the city is is stating that they will make with facilities and and fleet and all of that?
Well, I'm gonna let I'm gonna let Beth answer that question because she can answer it more precisely.
Hi, yeah. So those reductions are from, so you can see in the packet, there's and I apologize, I probably needed to put like a yellow, an orange box around the ones that are included, so it matches the reductions from local actions like that that sort of orange bracket. So that is city fleet conversion, densification, multifamily E V charging, building efficiency, building electrification and increased rooftop solar. So those are the actions that are spelled out, like above there in the in the text above there, where we talk about the different actions. Those are the reductions that are included in that sort of wedge of that big wedge graphic.
Okay, so to to be clear, all of those things you just mentioned, are those things that the city will be doing only? Or does that include citizens taking action on any of those items?
That also includes citizen actions.
Okay, to to what extent? That that is it with a hundred percent compliance with with all those things that we're not compelling anybody to do? Because again, all of these things, if we hop down to the section of the packet where it gives the actual G H G sub-element policies, we have support, incentivize, incentivize, educate, partner. We have a lot of these sorts of terms. None of them are going to compel, lead by example. None of these things are going to compel the majority of residents in the city to take any of these actions. And I guess my concern is if that if if that section of the pie is based on everybody taking action on these things, then we're even worse off than we than we think we are based on that based on that projection.
It is based on achieving some reasonably high level of compliance over the course of the next twenty or so years. So all of these actions are phased in through time, and assuming a change in uptake, people switch out to heat pumps, for example, when their gas furnace gives out, for example. Or, you know, those those kinds of things. So it's not like everybody switches to heat pump tomorrow. That's not what we're modeling here.
I I think I I think that example is a good one. But I I think it's it's also important to understand, and and I hope citizens can can cure this and and understand what's taking place. While no, there are no mechanisms right now, there aren't, nobody's compelling anybody to do something now. But the but the aim is for everybody to take these sorts of actions. So when you do need to get a a new furnace, that you should probably do a heat pump, regardless of whether that's the most cost-effective option. If the free market were to say, we have option A and option B, they may choose the natural gas option, because currently it is still less expensive to purchase a a natural gas furnace than it is for a heat pump. So so while currently, this, you know, this document isn't compelling anybody to take any specific actions regarding climate change and greenhouse gas emissions. What it is is doing is that it's setting the groundwork for a future council to say, yeah, we really want to achieve this goal now, and we are going to force grandma to to get a heat pump when her her furnace goes out. I mean, if we're being honest with ourselves, no, this isn't this isn't compelling anybody today to do anything. But just like a skeleton, you've got to put all the other parts of the body onto the skeleton, and all of those parts are going to look back to this document and say, hey, the city has these particular values based on what that city council voted on and what they continue to vote on, regardless of you know, whether the free market may provide a more cost-effective option for some of these things that we are saying stating as as values as being more important.
If I may, that's one of the reasons why we revisit this every five years, and we look at the education piece is a really heavy component, and what we want to do is we want to educate people on making cost-effective decisions. And some of those, when you look at life cycle, the most cost-effective solution may be something that's also beneficial to 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 the goals of this plan. And again, we can revisit this and will be required to revisit it in five years. In five years, I expect a lot of market changes to have occurred. Five years ago, I would never have predicted the number of E V vehicles that are on the streets right now. And and the technology has come a long way, even in these five years, as it relates to repair and maintenance and those sorts of things that everybody was so concerned about. The availability of charging stations, et cetera, has also increased dramatically. Has it increased enough for everyone? Probably not, but nobody's requiring them to. But it but if we can provide information and education on the environmental as well as the cost benefits, I think that we'll see more and more people, and we'll see the market actually shifting towards the things that the that the that the people want to see.
Hold on a second. Councilmember Spencer, do you have anything else before I move on? I've got Councilmember Dunn next.
That's fine. You can move on.
Okay, Councilmember Dunn, and then Mayor Proton.
Hey, I I wanted to compare and contrast the stated goals of our existing comp plan using the other existing frameworks or sub-elements, as they're called. And I'll refer first to urban design. We, right now, through ordinance two twenty-three, state we're going to maintain the urban village character and the scenic resources of the community. And to be clear, this document doesn't have, here's how we're going to measure it, and here's how we're going to force people to do it. This document provides a statement of objective, and it's our subsequent actions through development code and ordinance, which live that out. Those are important, I'm gonna say, community conversations that we're going to be having. But in my opinion, the document as prepared is aligned to and consistent with the statements of goals and the statement of policy objectives that we currently present in the comp plan for precisely the other comp plan required activities, housing, transportation, land use. So yeah, this document, in my opinion, meets the test of alignment to our current comprehensive plan and especially alignment with objectives and requirements from the State of Washington. Thanks.
You, Mayor Proton.
I have three things, and then I'd like to make a motion. One.
Well, I think there are still some other comments coming after you, so.
And there's a motion on the floor.
Yes.
Yes, I know. So two two comments, and then and then we can move on. One, I think it's important to point out that, obviously, we've talked a lot about this. One of the main sub-element policies is to reduce vehicle miles traveled.
What numbers?
It's on page sixty-four or seventy-four in the the previous document, where it says climate element, sub-element policies, is to reduce vehicle miles traveled. It has been a longstanding policy of our city to not only make traffic easier, but also support a third lane on Interstate ninety. This flies in the face of that, in my opinion. If we're going to tell our citizens that it's going to be a stated policy of the city through our comprehensive plan and this, that we're going to reduce vehicle miles traveled, I don't see how we could, in subsequent years, come out and say, hey, let's add another lane to I ninety through our city.
I respectfully disagree, because the idling that occurs on I ninety with two lanes during the peak hours generates way more greenhouse gas than if people could travel at
So if we if we were to add a third lane, that's gonna provide more room for traffic, not less.
That's what I'm saying, but it will reduce the idling that's occurring because we're back-to-back vehicles.
Okay. I also will just say, you know, in the in the last meeting, a comment was made that if our friends next door in Idaho don't do this, they're going to be on fire. And tonight, we heard that if we don't do this, there's not going to be a future. Those kind of comments are not helpful. We're trying to, everyone knows that we have to do this. It is a state requirement. What we're trying to do is make it better. And all of the comments that I've heard around the dais have been ways that we can try to make it better. No one, I haven't heard anyone say, let's not do this. We have to do it. It's a state requirement. The question is, how can we make it better? And so I threw out ideas earlier. I hope others will throw out ideas as well. I I also spoke with members of the Planning Commission, in fact, one member of the Planning Commission, who said that, yes, they voted for it, but they had a lot of unanswered questions about it as well. And I think we all, I think that's a reflection of what we all have, a lot of unanswered questions in terms of how we're going to do this. So, thank you.
I think we had Councilmember Kurtson and then Councilmember Ball, maybe. Go ahead.
So I think what Mayor Proton just summed up, I think, why we need to move forward. The unanswered questions are the answers that we're going to get from the Department of Commerce. What I heard earlier was in that we want to make things better. In order to make things better, we need feedback, and we need feedback from the people that are going to be approving this and potentially pre-approving it to help defend us against lawsuits in the future. So I do think that we are not the people that are the ones are prepared enough to give feedback. I'm not. I mean, I I read it. It makes sense to me, but I wouldn't have a lot of feedback to offer. But I do think that the Department of Commerce, hopefully, will have that feedback, that we do need to make this better. And that's why I do think that we need to go forward with it. I had a lot of circles here of things while people were talking. I also think with the metrics that people were talking about earlier, as I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, but the way that we how we decide to do things later by ordinance or by code then gives us something to measure, because we will have done something. This council will have decided affirmatively what they want to do, and that's how we get the metrics. Yeah, okay. What I also heard you say, Lisa, was that the this plan is achievable, that it's not perfect, we're probably not going to meet it, but we can do the things that are in here. Is that right?
That's absolutely correct. Okay.
I I I heard earlier that it was rushed. I heard you contradict that. Eighteen months, we've had a lot of engagement, a lot of different ways for us to engage, a lot of different ways for residents to engage, for residents to give feedback, for residents to be a part of the process on committees, for our planning commission to be a part of it. And we've also talked in the past about following what our commissions recommend to us, and that's been sort of a hallmark for some of us, about following the recommendations of our commissions and our citizens who've given their time and their expertise in that we've appointed to this. I think the last thing, because it got brought up, I think some of the comments tonight have felt a little fear-based. The tenor in the community has been fear-based, and no one's coming for your hamburgers, man. It's not going to happen. I'm not voting to take away people's hamburgers, not now, not in the future, no matter how much Kool-Aid I drink. So to lay something out there about a council member saying something and lighting a fire in the community when the equivalent is happening in social media is a little hypocritical, and I wish it would stop.
Right. Councilmember Ball, I think you had your hand up next.
Right. Okay, well, I just wanted to say that in response to Councilmember Spencer, I think he I think maybe a lot of us underestimate the population here. Maybe people are fired up about being more sensible about their carbon footprint. So I wouldn't necessarily write them off. Also, I've heard the words folly, warm and fuzzy, and something else with regard to this report. And I just think that's really rude, and it's not accurate. And as far as a third lane on I ninety, has it ever occurred to anybody? That could be a transit lane? Anybody here living in a big city, you know, you have a transit lane? And that would be fabulous, because then we have more people riding the bus, less cars on the road. And additionally, I can't remember who said about comments, oh, that are not helpful about panicking or fear, whatever. Comments that are not helpful are ones that are untrue on a certain social media site about taking meat away, taking rights away, et cetera. That's not helpful either. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going before, so we we're still in round two on comments. We've not heard from Councilmember Van Orman or Councilmember Kennedy. Would you like to add anything, Councilmember Van Orman?
Sure. First of all, I think the subject matter needs to be addressed always.
Can you get closer to your mic?
I'm not against climate, as far as making sure that we protect what
I'm not against climate as far as making sure that we protect what we have. Um, some things that you can do a little bit differently, which I think we've done in the past and we can do in the future, is making sure that we know exactly what we're composting and so forth. You could put compost, um, barrels inside of the, each one of the community gardens.
We actually talked about that, that some of the-
That you basically crank, uh, four-day work weeks. Things to do to make sure that we safely do it and inexpensively do it as we get more innovative. I know they're talking about, um, hydrogen and, uh, things that are coming up. So twenty years from now, things are going to look a lot different.
Agreed.
But in the meantime, I want to make sure that our residents are not concerned about having high costs. And that's where I come in, hoping that we can mitigate that. Because I'm hearing from the state level that new construction is no longer able to go and put in natural gas lines. They have to convert all, all over their, uh, to electrical.
That is not true. That is not what the building code says. There was discussion of that, but that's not what it says.
Good, good to hear because that came from an actual home builder. So, um, thank you for that one.
Okay. So we're still in round two. Councilmember Kennedy, do you have anything to add for round two?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Um, I do see Councilmember Spencer back up in line.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Lisa, just, just to be crystal clear though, uh, as far as timelines and everything, I, I want to kind of understand the process here. So we're potentially going to submit this and they're going to give us some feedback. Do we have to have an approved sub-climate sub-element by the end of twenty-twenty-six or simply something submitted?
By the end of twenty-twenty-six, we have to have an approved one. Yes, absolutely. And what we're trying to do here is there's a hundred and twenty-day timeline for Commerce to review this, to give us feedback. And then we'll have to make modifications. And as I said, at that point, we will have the other elements and there will be the need to crosswalk these goals and policies with other elements within the comp plan. Again, looking to try and, um, this was the drop dead date when we still had a, um, when we're still looking at a deadline of, uh, June of twenty-twenty-six to have an adopted comp plan. We don't have to have that now, but we have to have all of this associate, associated development goals or, uh, uh, development codes amended also by December thirty-first. And as I've said many times before, it's nearly impossible to write that code if we don't know what's going to be in the comp plan. We need the adopted comp plan in order to develop that code.
So, so just to follow up on, on that, Lisa, so if we, if we, uh, approved something, uh, today and, and a hundred and twenty days, you know, it's going to be mid-November, are we, uh, is this, is this particular council going to see this document again before the end of the year?
Probably not before the end of the year. What we would get feedback, we'd have to make the amendments. We would be putting back together the, the, the draft comp plan. We have to bring back the draft comp plan to you, Commerce. We then have to submit it to Commerce and, and all the other, uh, adjacent jurisdictions and agencies, et cetera, for a minimum sixty-day review. And then we have to modify the, that, we have to incorporate their comments before we bring it back to you for final adoption.
But, but Lisa, would there be a chance, though, excuse me for interrupting, Jed, I'm trying to maybe rephrase what you asked, and if I do it wrong, please stop me.
Sure.
When we get that feedback back from Commerce, could we have a report on what they, what their feedback was?
Absolutely. Not only that, I would envision that we would have a workshop as to propose changes based upon that feedback that would, before it goes into the comp plan, it's-
But, but, but I think Jed, Councilmember Spencer was asking specifically before the end of this calendar year. Would, would it be possible to get, at least get a report, this is what, this is what Commerce's feedback was? We'll have to do more work on it past that, but I think, I, I think what he's asking is, well, you know, will, will that information be available to be at least discussed?
I, I cannot guarantee that it will, but, um, it, it could potentially be available. It's, again, the minimum is a hundred and twenty days, but-
Oh, it's a minimum.
So just, just to follow up on that though, Lisa, the, the other, the other question I have is you, you mentioned the, the potential that the city could be, uh, could be sued. Uh, that would be if we don't have something turned in, uh, and approved by the end of twenty-twenty-six, right? There, there's not a preliminary deadline for the sub-element. Is that correct? Or, or am I understanding that wrong?
No, there, the deadline is for the comprehensive plan. When we up the comprehensive plan, if somebody chooses to sue us over the climate element, um, we would have, we would be defended by Commerce if they pre-approve that. And again, right now, well, it depends on, I, I'm not, I don't know whether they will or not based upon the fact that we're not showing that, that we're meeting the, their goal for twenty-fifty.
So, right, and, and you, you just mentioned earlier in the presentation that no, no city has turned in an approved plan so far. They've, no city has been approved, uh, had their, uh, initial plan approved by Commerce. Is that right?
That is, that is correct because what's happened is the first round of comp plans were just due on, um, were just due, um, this coming year. If they wanted to seek pre-approval, it just ended like the middle of the month or something like that, that they had to get it in. We're trying to get ahead of the pack as we have with many elements of the comp plan because we're looking at, um, the heavy lift being the development code.
Okay, you look like you're still thinking.
Well, I, I, I guess, I guess the, the follow-up question to that is, is there, is there anything that prevents us, if we did send this back to the planning commission, to remove some things or to revise it in any way? Is there anything that prevents us from doing that concurrent with all the other portions of the comp plan that you're working on?
Um, I, I'm not sure that I understand your question. No, of course not. Yeah, there's, you could send anything back to the planning commission.
Okay.
While this is being reviewed by Commerce?
While this is being reviewed by Commerce, yes.
Oh, even, even while it's being, but, but if we chose not to, to go ahead and submit it to Commerce now, send it back to the planning commission for whatever reason, there's, there's nothing that says we're going to get sued in the meantime. The only, the only point in time in which we could potentially be sued over this whole thing or potentially lose state grants would be if we didn't have an approved plan turned in by the end of next year.
Well, so-
Is that correct?
So technically, technically, to, for the pre-approval to work, you have to, basically, you're going to have to have the approved plan prior to, you have to be, have adopted it for the approval process. So, um, I, I, again, this is, uh, this, it, the, the, the rules that Commerce has put forward are very confusing right now. And we're just trying to get ahead of the game. We're trying to get through this pre-approval process. We may miss, miss the window, even if we were adopting the comp plan in, in December of twenty-twenty-six. Only because of, um, and, and like I said, there's no way we're going to get the development code done. And I will say one more thing about that. When we're talking about the changes to the development code, this has nothing to do with changes to the development code. It's the housing, it's the, it's the parking, it's the, all the, 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 um, the various other changes to the Growth Management Act that are going to be a very heavy lift to get incorporated into our development code. But we have to have the comp plan in order to do that.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Dan's got his hand up and then we'll go to Councilmember-
Yeah. Um, Lisa, I just want to express my perception of the utility of the comp plan in comparison to the, um, development code and subsequent ordinances. I think of the comp plan as kind of the foundation or the base of a triangle in the formation of what are the codes of the city. And that subsequent layers, I call it, of action, code, uh, policy, uh, are all built on, on top of what is the definition in the comp plan. And I use that kind of visualization to reflect on the notion that we really need to secure the comp plan in order to effectively proceed into the development code and any subsequent actions of policy which are required. So, you know, my perspective is that, uh, in order of activity, the comp plan really needs to be secured first in order for the staff to e-effectively and meaningfully complete the objectives in the development code change. So, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm hearing that right.
Yes, thank you for very articulately saying what I'm trying to say.
Okay, I just want to make sure I got that right. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Uh, we have Councilmember Kurtz next.
I don't want to go backwards because I think we got to a good spot there. But I've heard from a couple of councilmembers, the prospect of getting sued. And I, I'm wondering if we're all on the same page with who might sue us and when. I feel like there might be some perception that the state would sue us for not doing this, which is not what I heard. It would be something way down the road later by a third party somewhere else. Is that accurate?
I, I think that that probably is accurate and I can't say with certainty what the state, the state's power is that they can preemptively come in and say, thou shalt.
Right.
And they, they've been doing that a lot lately.
Right. And I think that that's one thing that I would like to avoid. I, I see that in here, there's a lot of we can and we may do. There's no shall, there's no must. And I would hate for us to be in a position where we're being told again, uh, what to do and we lose our control over what it is we want to do.
E-absolutely, and I think that I, I want to take the, the, um, Councilmember Dunn's analogy a step further. So the base of this pyramid is, as he said, the, the comp plan and then the development code. And from that, we're looking at strategic plan, programs and funding. And ultimately, i- we have to get that base right. And I, I appreciate that we're asking questions about what we would do at the top of the pyramid, but I can't answer them until we, until we build the base.
I think, does he, Councilmember Ball just hands up? Just so you can see your hand up?
Oh, well, just something, um, that came up a little bit ago. I just wanted to add to Wendy's comment about hydrogen or, um, energy. There's also the possibility down the road and Mark, uh, uh, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but were those S, small, the small reactors?
Yes.
Yeah, that could be happening in the not-too-distant future too, couldn't it?
I, I would say that Vista is well on its way in its planning process to begin developing and implementing some small-scale nuclear projects.
Right.
I don't know where and when, but yes, they're in.
So, I mean, you know, things are going to change constantly.
All right, let's try to wrap up, um, round three. You have not gone yet.
I'm just, I would just like to amend the motion that's on the floor to return this to the planning commission, uh, and ask them to, um, put in metrics and, uh, metrics and, uh, potential costs.
That would be-
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion on the motion on the floor about returning to planning commission to add metrics? I guess my question would be, what are, what, what are we asking for? I mean?
So I would respectfully suggest that we'd have to, um, hire another consultant or modify this consultant's task order to be able to even begin to evaluate the metrics and put together cost, um, estimates for that. We don't have the bandwidth on staff, nor do we have the scope in this budget.
We have the Councilmember Kurtz first.
But don't we need to decide what we want to measure and, and what actions we want to take out of this in order to establish metrics? I mean, I think that's what I heard Lisa say is that the metrics would be based on decisions this council would make later. But this is a draft high-level proposal. It's not in the, it's, it's not the comprehensive plan. It's, it's a piece of it. Am I wrong?
No, you're absolutely right.
Mayor Pertham.
So when I'm talking about metrics, I'm not talking about the actions. What I'm talking about is, and Lisa, you, uh, referenced this, what's on page seventeen of the report? That graphic that has the emissions forecast. I would like, I would be more comfortable with this if I knew that our metric by twenty-twenty-six is that we're going to try to reduce emissions by such and such an amount. Uh, our metric by twenty-twenty-eight is that it's going to be this amount. By twenty-thirty, it's going to be this, or, you know, pick your, pick your data point there. But that's what I'm talking about with metrics. I think that would help me at least know that, okay, our, we'll know in twenty-four months if we're even coming close to meeting these metrics. And if we're want, and if we're not, then we can reassess or the next council can reassess. My concern about waiting five years is that that's another five years toward the twenty-fifty goal that if we're not meeting any of this, these things, or not even coming close, then we're going to be even further in trouble, uh, with what our, what our overall goal is.
I have a question on that for clarification. So what you're requesting in terms of cost, is the cost to assess that in twenty-four year, in twenty-four months?
Um, no, I mean, it could be that. Um, I mean, that's a good point. It could, it could definitely be that. To me, um, when I say costs, you know, if, you know, if we're, if I was king for a day, I would say, okay, on page, on this graphic that we have, that lists all the different sub-policies and sub-elements and all, I mean, there's pages and pages of them. If we simply add another, um, section to this Excel sheet that says, okay, the metric here is that we're going to lower this by ten, we're going to lower emissions by ten percent by this time. And if you look at, for instance, sub-goal one point four, pursue dark skies certification, what is the cost to that? Is, is it a, is there any cost? Or maybe there's not a cost, in which case it would be zero. But I would certainly like to know, and I think future councils would like to know, A, what the metrics are and B, what the costs are.
I think, I think to jump into getting costs like that is way, way premature because each one is going to be different based on the, on the, um, policy that the council, at whatever time that is, whether it's, you know, January of next year or ten years from now, whatever the policy and, and implementation is that the council decides, we'll need to, all those numbers will be, need to be evaluated at that time. Things, things change. But use, on this graph, Lisa, doesn't that really call out, based looking at the graph, those are our goals?
Right. So what, what Beth has just, uh, texted me is that, uh, they can provide those greenhouse gas values in a table instead of a graph. So we can, we can add a table to this before we submit it to Commerce, if that would satisfy you.
A table, can you repeat that?
Yeah, so, so what, I'm reading from Beth's text.
We can, she's still on, is she still on? We can let her talk. You can speak, you can speak.
Okay, let me turn myself on again. Hi, yes. So, I mean, so that graphic is just a spreadsheet made graphical, right? So we have those numbers. We could put them in a table. If that is helpful. We are also, Commerce, part of the climate element is like this very specific worksheet form where you put in all the numbers of all your different things that we've laid out for you in a somewhat more easy-to-understand form in the report. But that also includes just being like, here's, here's what we expect it to be given these actions in twenty-thirty and twenty-fifty. So that, that is part of, um, part of it. So if we can, we can make it into a table and, and add it in if that, if that would satisfy that, uh, that curiosity.
If, if I can interject, I think the question that Lisa was ultimately driving to is if we're going to collect, measure and report the metric, which has been defined as the, uh, greenhouse gas emissions, we're scheduled to do that in five years. If we're going to do it before five years, we're going to need funding to pay for that data collection and reporting. Is, is that going to be appropriated now or are we going to do that during the budget process? What does that look like?
Yeah, I guess I've got a little bit of clarification for the motion. Are you asking for all of this to be done before this goes, goes to Commerce or in parallel with? Because it's a draft and we'll have, we have, we'll have a chance to make changes down the road.
Well, the motion was before.
Okay, yeah, I don't think you specifically said that you had to send it back.
Well, I'll stick with the motion being before. See where that goes.
Okay, so the motion is to return this, the document to the planning commission before sending to Commerce with this, with the requested change to add the metrics, is the ta- metrics is the ta, the ta, this is the graph converted to a table.
Yes, and and potential costs was the other part of the motion.
That's.
You just want to read or show, read about.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just on on the cost. I just don't, there's, I mean, we're talking months and months of work that we don't have staff for is my concern. Councilmember Kurtz, you're raising your hand.
Kind of, because I think that it doesn't sound like remanding it back to the Planning Commission is the appropriate step to get the measures we want. And it sounded like they can give us another table to meet the actual request that was just made. Which makes me think we actually don't need to remand it back to the Planning Commission. We'll need to take action later in order to meet our goals. We'll need to take action by voting at this council later to take any action on the things that would incur costs. So we don't know if we're, I don't know if I want to do a dark sky, whatever thing was in there. And I'm not prepared to talk about it tonight. So those are actions that we would take later in order to meet our goals. But I just don't think we're, I think we're getting a little bit too far in the weeds tonight for that. And I think if the if the table that the consultants can give us would satisfy Mayor Protem's question, so we have those metrics and it looks a little better than this one, it makes more sense to everybody. I just don't know that we need to go back to the Planning Commission.
Here's my concern about not having the dollar numbers or an estimate. And again, all of this is an estimation. I mean, it's all estimated. So, you know, to to me, the estimates are are about as they're not extremely valuable, but they can be helpful to some people. But, you know, Lisa, you mentioned earlier that the state got rid of the implementation dollars, correct? So that's part of the reason I have heartburn about being required to implement these things without implementation dollars.
So I I'm going to pause for a second because we are required to plan for this. We, to meet the specific information requirements within the RCWs. We are required to assess our progress. I'm not sure that there's anywhere in the RCWs today that actually require us to implement. And I, and so that's, I I think that, I I think that, and I I don't want to be I don't want to be disrespectful, but I but I think that, I I think that it's important that the goals be genuine. And that the aspirations that we as a community have, we tried to do that when we went through the menu of all the goals and policies that could achieve this. We tried to really be specific about what fit Liberty Lake because we, because we want to aspire to to do this. So I'm not suggesting that we don't have an intent to do it, but I don't think we have a mandate to do it. That's a different thing.
But I'll use an example, right? One of the lines in there was change our golf carts at Trailhead to electric. Well, go get quotes for all new carts, get get quotes for all the charging station, get quotes for how many extra carts are we going to need? Because we won't be able to keep them all charged. What I'm saying is there's a lot, a lot of work on in all of this if you want to cost.
Right. And one of the things that we wanted to do with, we, we, if you remember in the original grant proposal, we proposed reserving $100,000 for implementation, which we said, well, we would, we would decide what that would be later. But the thought was whether it would be to look at energy efficiency in city facilities, whether it would be looking at electrification of, but the, all of these implementation strategies are still plans. There are still additional studies that are required to determine whether or not it is cost effective and feasible for this city, given our circumstances. Those are the things that we haven't done yet. Right now, we just have aspirational goals and and policies to try and move the needle. How we actually implement that is going to depend on these subsequent studies, et cetera. And we'll probably do more studies if there is more grant funding available in the future. And it may be a little slower to implement otherwise.
Some of these may not get, you know, if if they are implemented or studied, may may not be done another 10 or 15 years.
Right. Not all of these, not all of the things that we do are ready for prime time yet. But they are still val, valid and valuable goals and and aspirations.
Okay. Do you have any more comments or questions before I go to vote on the, on the motion to?
Can I, can I make one more?
Yes, absolutely.
Just on the, on the, on the amendment. And that is that if putting the metrics into tabular format is something that would be valuable for this council to consider. We already have the data. It's just not presented in that format. We could have this on the council agenda for August 5th with that table in there. The costs are maybe a different, I could certainly put in costs associated with analyzing our progress more frequently than every five years. I could certainly include some costs associated with that. If that would satisfy what you're looking for. Again, I I want to better understand what what it is that you need.
Go ahead.
No, no, I was saying.
Because it sounded like.
Annie and Wendy had some.
Okay, well, I think it sounded like the question was to you.
Well, so I thought it had to be submitted before August 5th.
So it has to be submitted by August 15th, that 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 detailed checklist that 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 Beth was talking about has to be submitted with it and is dependent upon the document. And so we were looking for that to finalize that. She's working on it right now. We don't have that checklist and we can't finalize that checklist until you have said, okay, this is what we want to send forward to Commerce for planning purposes. It's actually, our target date is actually August 15th. We're trying to to get it to Commerce. So that would, I I would want to move it along quickly to be able to still meet that deadline.
All right, Councilmember Van Orman.
So as I see this, reduction from local action is basically what we're looking at.
Mm hmm.
So pretty much what we have now, how we're going to reduce it with that metric of what percent by what year?
We we actually, yeah, we actually have the, we actually have the the numbers embedded in this table.
So from what I've seen here, you've got rooftop solar installation, building electrification, building efficiency and city fleet conversion. Those are all things that we need to do at the city. Don't know how much that's going to be with residents, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, there are things with the city that we talk about and we, but they're also done over the 20 year period, not necessarily in the five, even the five year period. And again, as I said, each and every one of those actions require a feasibility study unto itself. And that's, that's where we would get the cost and determine whether or not it made sense for us to do it.
Okay. All right. Any more comments on the, on the amended motion, Councilmember Kurtz?
No.
Anybody else? Councilmember Kenny, we haven't heard from you in a while. Do you have any comments on the, on the returning to the Planning Commission? Piece of all of this?
I know, I have no, I have no additional comments.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure I wasn't missing you. All right, if there's no further. Okay, Councilmember.
I just want clarification. So the motion is to return it to the Planning Commission for metrics before it goes to Commerce.
I will, I pretend to.
Metrics and costs was the motion.
Again, can you clarify? Why? I think we're still stuck on what costs are you?
I specifically the ones that, I mean, Wendy mentioned four, four or five of them. If we're going to have to install EV station, uh, uh, charging stations at city facilities, what's the estimated cost of of doing that? If we are going to phase out the use of gas powered landscaping equipment for city operations, what's the estimated cost of doing that? So those are the ones that I'm specifically talking about, not necessarily every single thing in here. But as it relates to how the impact on the city and therefore city taxpayers. If we did that, what's the estimated cost?
So before I go to Councilmember Kurtz, I will reiterate, it's been made very clear that we do not have staff time and resources to do that. Councilmember Kurtz.
I don't know if I want to do those things. And I think we get to vote on whether we do those things. And that's, that's not what we're here for. So until we vote to say, I want to assess the city fleet. That's when we get those costs. I don't know that I want to do that. I don't know that, I think, I don't know that we should have EVs for police vehicles. Those are things that we need to talk to the chief about. Those are longer, bigger pieces of things. And so I don't want to go out and try to have staff that doesn't have time to do this give us costs on something we haven't even agreed to do at this point.
Or even agree to talk about.
No.
Yeah, it's, that's the top of the pyramid where we get into the detail.
What I guess to continue on, I think what, in my mind, and Lisa, please again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I view this as a mission statement. You said it's our aspirations. It's big picture. These are, these are some methods that we might consider in the future to reduce our greenhouse, get greenhouse gases to comply with state law. And because maybe we want to, some of us do, some of us don't, that's fine. But the implementation plan is going to come later. We are going to make the implementation plan with you. You're going to make it. We're going to approve it. We're going to adjust it. As a council, we get to have that choice. And at the same time, our citizens get to have a choice in that. Maybe they don't want new EV police cars. Maybe they don't want some of the things that we might consider, but that's where the community engagement piece comes in. And I think that we're, we're really 10 steps ahead of where we need to be, but we're like you said, up here, when we really need to be down here with the foundation, have the draft go forward. Have the Commerce Department give us some feedback. And then we get to approve the final plan when it's time and we have more information.
Any more questions before we go to vote on this? Mark?
I think Councilmember Ball has a question, but I'd like to ask one before we go.
Sure. Go ahead, Linda. Go ahead.
I guess I just want to repeat, there's nothing in here that says must. You know, we don't have to have a, an electric fleet if we don't want to, but this needs to go sooner than later. It really does. And I would like to add that council, we kicked this down the road a week because Councilmember Spencer was out of town and really wanted to be a part of this conversation. I will not be here on the 5th. So I would like to ask that we don't kick this down the road because I'd like to be involved in this decision just as much as he did.
Yep. Okay, Mark.
I just want to make sure that before the vote is taken, that I understand and Lisa understands clearly what metric is being requested because right now, the the result of the greenhouse gas element, because that's the one that we're talking about right now, is the reduction from point A to point B. The measure of that is the amount of greenhouse gas that's measured. Are are you asking for different metrics? Or are you asking for more frequent measurement of that metric? That's what I would like clarification on.
I, to me, I am asking for a metric that shows what this, the, basically what this, the goal of the city is in more frequent in more frequent iteration, I guess, is is. So, so basically, I I am fine with what you said, Lisa, about that graphic, basically turning it into a year by year. I, that's perfect to me because then that gives us something and a future council could come in and say, well, hey, you know, we, we committed to this that says we're going to have a 5% reduction by 2026. Are we anywhere close to that? Or we committed to, you know, 10% by 2030? That's, that's what I'm referring to. So I guess the answer is, as the mayor said, probably both.
So we would need at a separate discussion to talk about the cost associated with more frequent measurements. But but if that was, if those are the two things that you're wanting to see, I'm not sure if the Planning Commission, I'm not sure if we're manding it to the Planning Commission will answer either of those questions.
No, because the data points already exist.
Right.
We're just presenting the same data in a different format to address what you want to see. The cost is something that I could get, give an estimate on based upon what it cost us to do this initially.
The cost of the met, of the assessment.
Of the assessment. And and so then council can decide how frequently they want to do that. It doesn't have to be necessarily included in this plan for purposes of submission to Commerce. But with that information in the final plan that comes back as part of comp plan, you could actually sent as part of the implementation plan that, yes, we want to, we want to assess this every two years or we want to, or every, every year for that matter, depending upon whether, what your appetite was to pay for the cost of actually assessing it.
Councilmember Kurtz.
So two questions. You talked about the cost measure. And I think what I heard you also just say is that we can still send this to Commerce and at the same time, you can get those numbers to us about what cost to measure at a more frequent basis. And in August or September or whenever you have time to do that, then we could assess whether we want to spend that money.
I think we can have that all together for you by August 5th. That is information that's available right now.
Okay, with no need to go to Planning Commission.
With no need to go to Planning Commission because it was already dated that's embedded. Again, you've seen this, you've seen the numbers before. You saw the budget for, I know, nobody remembers what, I couldn't tell you what it was. But you saw the budget for, for the consultant for this project. We can simply give you a present value dollar for what it costs to assess this.
But the other, and then thank you for that, Lisa. But the other thing I think I heard Mayor Protem say in what he was wanting was the cost that she had just said, which were costs for implementation. So I guess is that the ask or is it just about the measurement? Because I just want to make sure we know what we're voting on.
Again, my my motion was an estimated cost for some of these items that are specific to city taxpayers and to the city.
And that's something that I probably can't even complete without additional budget in the timeframe of the comprehensive plant that when it's, when the 12, the December 2026, I need budget. I need to go out for RFPs and and we need to do feasibility analyses. I don't know that we could get that done and get this adopted. Honestly.
Can I ask for clarification on what the actual original motion was?
The original motion made by Councilmember Ball?
No.
Councilmember.
For the, he amended the updated one. An amended motion on the floor was to return to the Planning Commission before submitting to Commerce to add ma, matrix that shows what the goal is in a more frequent iteration and potential cost.
And that sounds specific to the measurement, not to the implementation. And I'm just making sure that that's where everybody else is at. Am I hearing that wrong?
That was my intent.
Okay, wait. So we're not, so what I heard her just say, and I think what he disagreed with is that we're not talking about implementation costs of EV golf carts. We're simply wanting to know the cost of more frequent measurement of metrics.
That I can provide.
It, and as long as we're talking about the one metric that we've already got defined, if if you want to define additional metrics, that's going to take.
It sounds, it sounds like the consensus is convert the graph to to data points. Right. To show what those metrics are already.
Right. So if we're only talking about the measure, the metric that it's already been defined, which is greenhouse gas emission, that's not a problem. If we're talking about adding additional metrics, which I've heard both, so we, I, we, because I don't want to set the Planning Commission off on something that they don't need to do. But at the same time, I want them to have clarity so that they can produce what you're asking them to produce.
I see. In my mind, I'm still hearing a disconnect. I'm still hearing some people thinking we're talking about the motion being about providing the cost to do the more frequent assessment. I think I'm still hearing from you, though, is what you want is the, some implementation estimates.
That was my original intent. Yeah.
Yeah. So we still have this disconnect and we've been.
We are not, nobody's hearing each other because we clarified that twice.
Yes. Okay. Yeah. So again, on the, on the original intended request, we can meet the one without sending, without sending it back to Planning Commission. We cannot meet the other period.
So, and let me say this a different way. The first thing that we can do, we already have the data, the the graph is based on the data, it's just providing it in a tabular form. I would suggest that we would keep the graph, but also provide the tabular format. Number two, we could add a sentence to say, to assess this more frequently. It would be X dollars in $20,25. Um, it would be X dollars in, uh, 20, $25.
Right. But that's not what the ask is. That's not what the intended asked us. But, but I'm still trying to, trying to get the point home that we don't have the staff to do that. We don't have the time to do it. You're not going to get it.
Well, we also don't have a budget to, for the feasibility analysis. We also, so I mean, that, we, we would need that in place. We would need to go out for RFQs and whatever to do the feasibility analysis that we're talking about. And then it's going to be six months to do it at, for each of, of a multitude of tasks.
So given that restatement, where you made the, you made the amended motion. Are you still wanting to continue with it as originally intended?
Let's vote on that and then we can come back.
Okay. So hear me out one more time. The motion is to return to planning, the, the plan to planning commission before it goes to Commerce to add the data points based on the provided graph and the costs associated with implementation of all of the, well, with some of the larger elements. Those in favor, please say aye. If I can get a. Tom, okay, I've got one. Okay. So just me, I'm going to run through this. So I've got Chris and Jed in favor. Councilmember Kennedy, I can't see or hear anything from you. So I'm assuming I'm going to move on to the those, those opposed. So I've got Councilball, Councilmember Ball, Councilmember Van Orman, Councilmember Kurtz, Councilmember Dunn, and Councilmember Kennedy. Was that a nay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. The noes have it. So that motion has failed. So we are back to the main one, which is to approve, uh, go ahead.
So, so again, the ask is to, is to approve this for planning purposes to submit to Commerce for feedback and hopefully preapproval.
Could, could you though? And, and, and I'm going to go for silence as consent here. Could you make that change, make that addition of the table and the estimated cost for the added assessments by the time they come back and see this again?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, we could do it before it's a commerce.
Perfect. So that way we don't, we don't, it's no extra cost or anything. It's just some adjustments. The Mayor Pro Tem.
Um, thank you. And I, I thank everyone for bearing with us here while we went through this. I'm going to vote no on this, uh, simply because I don't think we should be, uh, adopting a plan that will inevitably lead to higher costs for our citizens and the city without telling our citizens and the city what those costs are going to be. So, thank you.
Right. So I'm, I'm going to hold off going to a vote on the original motion because it's five till eight and I think we're scheduled to adjourn at eight and we still have another topic. So do we have somebody who, who will make a motion to extend the meeting?
Oh, uh.
Point of procedure, I don't believe that special meetings can be extended.
Oh.
What? Sean?
I don't see, was there a time limit that was set on this? I didn't see.
I thought the agenda said six to eight.
It did. Yes.
Okay. So we won't have time for our second subject.
We can't extend it?
Okay. Well, I'm going to go ahead and take the vote while Sean's looking at the, with three hours of rules on extension.
There are four minutes left in the meeting.
Like, well, Sean's going to look that, look at that, take the vote. Uh, all right. Those in favor of, um, approving the GHG sub-element of the comp plan as the working draft, um, with the discussed amendments, the, with the table and the cost for additional assessments, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we've got Councilmember Ball, Councilmember Kurtz, I think I saw Councilmember Van Orman, Councilmember Dunn. And those opposed?
No.
Okay. And I couldn't, I didn't hear anything either way from Councilmember Kennedy. Are you yea or nay, Councilmember Kennedy?
I'm in fa- I'm in favor of passing it on.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. Motion passes five, five to two. All right. So that is approved with the discussed changes. Extend.
I just wanted to relook at the rules of the amendment, but
Right. We got two and a half minutes.
The council has stopped at the designated time.
Okay.
Where's the station?
Hold on.
No, I'm just double checking, making sure as far as revisions, but historically the council has stopped at the time that the designated time. So whenever the time has been concluded, that's when the council has stopped.
Mayor Pro Tem?
So I would like to, uh, then propose that we hold another special meeting before, uh, August 5th.
Mike, uh, Mark, Kyle, you've got two minutes. Can, we got the motion. Do we have a, do we have a?
On this topic.
Right. On, on.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion of second. Kyle, can you address the timeline real quick?
So August 5th is the deadline. Auditor's office closes at four o'clock. We would need to submit a resolution to them with, um, with the ballot measure to include the statement of subject and explanatory statement drafted by the city attorney based on council consensus of that material. Uh, along with the voting question, we also need to form pro and con committees uh, for whatever the consensus is to put on a, a ballot that is, uh, then adopted by resolution. There's opportunity for rebuttals. I won't get into that. If there is no pro and con committee, uh, the author, uh, the auditor will appoint pro and con committees on a first come, first served basis. Uh, advisory votes are intended to gauge popular sentiment, not legally binding. That would cost about $5,000.
So if we have a special meeting next week, that only leaves us six days, including a weekend.
Correct. And so the, the, the content of the resolution would need to be established at some point then to bring back prior to August 5th for, uh, council consideration.
But August 5th is too late.
Yes, prior to. So yeah, it would have to be prior to August.
Everything's before that.
We'd have to have, we'd have to have two meetings between now.
You'd have to have two meetings between now and August 5th.
All right. One minute.
And there's no way we can extend this meeting.
The, the, the rules provide for, um, the time that the businesses be transacted. So the interpretation has been that the council stops their meetings at the time designated by the notice.
Okay. Well, we have a motion on the floor to set, schedule a second meeting. So, um, we have less than a minute. Those in favor of scheduling a second, uh, moving this to another meeting for the library, um, advisory vote, please say aye. Make it quick.
Aye.
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 Okay. I've got four in favor. I've got Wendy, Chris, Jed and Mike. I'm assuming the rest are opposed. Uh, we'll see if we can pull. I'm sorry?
You said nay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Kennedy, so you're a nay?
Done.
No, no, that was done.
That was done. Dan said.
Oh, sorry. Okay. So we had.
Four, three.
Four, three.
Yeah.
But passed. Okay.
Correct.
Yeah. All right. And now it's eight o'clock. So we're going to adjourn and look for a doodle poll, I guess. We'll try to pull, guarantee. We're adjourned.